Good evening. We're really excited to have a lot of folks in our chambers today. And we're really excited to call this regular city council meeting on March 6, 2023, to order. And let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
She's online.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. We'd now like to please rise for the invocation from Connect Church, Bert Cordley. Thank you so much for being here to bless our proceedings tonight.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, and thank y'all for y'all's service. And thank y'all for allowing the ministers to be able to come and offer an invocation. And just real quick, I don't know what protocol is. I don't know how many pastors, you know, but it's, you know, kind of a shooting match when you let a preacher get a mic. But anyway, we've got an egg hunt happening April 8 at Mountain View Park, provided our park permit is approved. If somebody could put the thumb on the scale of that, that would help.
You point the thumb up there, right?
Yeah, yeah. Somebody put the thumb on the scale of that. And I understand there is another egg hunt at Centennial Park that day, but y'all don't want to go to their heathen egg hunt. You want to come to our egg hunt. No, seriously, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father God, we thank you and we praise you for who you are. Father, I thank you for all of our civil servants and what they do to make our community, our city, a better place, a safer place, Father. And I just pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they go about allocating funds and making decisions about our city, Father. There's always more needs than there are resources. And so, Father, I just ask that, again, wisdom and guidance. So we ask for safety, for our public safety personnel, our law enforcement, our fire, our rescue personnel, Father. And we just ask that you watch over them. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
College of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some citizens request to speak to council. And we're very happy to first invite Tammy DeWolf to the podium. And she is representing the Fremont County Crime Stoppers.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I am Tammy DeWolf.
Autumn Dever.
Kathy Toothacre.
And we represent Fremont County Crime Stoppers. What we would like to do this evening is just remind our Fremont County citizens of the six key facets of Fremont County Crime Stoppers. So I would like to cover those with you now. Fremont County Crime Stoppers is a countywide nonprofit organization. We are organized for concerned individuals with preventing and solving local crime. Our mission is to keep communities a safe place to live, work, and play. If someone would like to report someone committing a crime and want to remain anonymous, please visit our Facebook page, which is the real Fremont County Crime Stoppers Facebook page. We have a P3 app on our Facebook page where you can report the details of that criminal activity, or you can call 719-275-7867. That's 275-STOP. If the report leads to an arrest, the individual is eligible for a cash reward up to $1,000. Fremont County Crime Stopper Board meets once a month to approve or deny those reports. It is a secret payment system which allows cash payment. And it does allow you to be anonymous when you report. We'd also like to remind everyone that if you are interested in serving on Fremont County Crime Stopper Board, we do have a one-page, user-friendly application to become a membership board member. And you can also inquire on our Facebook page. We do accept grants, donations, city market rewards, and Amazon Smile rewards because, as everyone knows, as a nonprofit, we must increase our funding in order to pay out those rewards. So if anyone is interested in any of that sponsorship, we certainly are appreciative of that. Thank you, city council.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Does the city council have anything they'd like to say or add? We just really appreciate all that you do in serving our community. It's a really, really important part of keeping our, as you say, our community safe. It's of utmost importance. And especially glad our police chief is here today to hear your presentation.
Yes, it's good timing tonight, isn't it? Chief Schick.
Absolutely. I know there's been a lot of news reports throughout the country of an increase of crime throughout the United States of America. And so, that's really on my radar right now, just making sure that we are doing everything we can in this community to take care of our people the best we can. And you're a really, really important part of doing that, so thank you.
Thank you. And I did notice on the city council website, we do have a quick link at the bottom of your website that leads to Fremont County Crime Stoppers. So thank you for the quick link. There you go. Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening.
The next person we have to address this is Kevin Marushak from Canyon City High School.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys allowing us to come down. Don't tell our students about these little timer things that sit in front right here because they might want some of those in the classroom. My name's Kevin Marushak. I teach at Canyon City High School. I'm one of the co-coordinators of the Supportive Senior Project. There's a flyer in front of you right there. This is now the third year of our project. We started this in the COVID years. And what it is, it's a community really effort to support our seniors as they move through their final weeks in terms of graduating. What that support looks like is small gifts in the amount of $25 in March, $25 in April, and then a larger gift of $50 in May. And also just words of encouragement as well, too. One of the reasons why we do this program, we have a fundamental belief in our high school that everybody is somebody. And a lot of our graduates have that support moving towards graduation, and some of them don't as well. And so, one of the neat things about this program is we solicit sponsors from the community. And sponsors could be businesses, could be individuals, could be groups. And we randomly pair sponsors with graduating seniors. So the kids are blown away that people would just sign up to just do this out of the kindness of their heart. They don't get to pick who they sponsor in terms of the high school. It was really neat. We launched on our Facebook page in January. And 19 minutes after we launched, we had our first sponsor. 12 minutes after that, our second sponsor signed up. And she was a graduate last year of this program. And she writes, I wrote to her and said, "Oh, hey, thank you so much for signing up. We appreciate this." She said, "Absolutely. I am so excited to be a part of this project. This project helped me in more ways than you know. I was really stressed my senior year and was ready to give up. This project reminded me that there are people out there who are proud of me and wish me to succeed. Thank you, CCHS and this community for doing this project." Just today, we put another information out on our Facebook page, and another graduating senior just signed up to be a sponsor today. So we're still in need of sponsors. We're about 40 sponsors short of what we need. There's information on this page right here for you guys. People can just call the high school and ask for information about the Supportive Senior Program. They can email me at the high school. My name's Kevin Marushak. And they can get information that way. And it really, really is a win-win for our community. It's a win for these kids. It's a win for our community as well. Do the math really quick here. $100 times 180 graduates, that's $18,000. We spend about 90% of that in this community right here. We go to small businesses down on Main Street. We go to the local coffee shops. They're coffee drinkers. 70% of them will like their coffee. So we're going down to the Bean Peddler and Jump Start Java and buying gift certificates to pour that money back into our community. Oh, the orange light is on. This worries me. This is a quote directly from two of our seniors. One of them, who has already signed up and filled out their form, said, "I love this program so much. I think it was a brilliant way to support seniors that are going through some pretty big changes in their life. And I especially thank you. You didn't know who you would be sponsoring. You only knew that you wanted to help someone from the class of 2023 feel special and important. You are spreading joy and kindness by doing this, and this is something so incredibly special. It's people like you that inspire young people like me to do good things. Never stop being you." One other one, and again, these are advanced thank yous from our seniors who have already filled out their survey. "I really think it is amazing that you would give gifts to a high school student that you don't even know. Thank you so much for your support as I finish high school and make big changes in my life. This is one reason why I love my hometown. It means a lot to me, and I hope we can meet." Thank you for your time today and letting us just spread information about this amazing program that we have at our school.
So Kevin, can you just say one more time if someone's interested in sponsoring a senior?
Yeah.
Where they can go? And is there a link they can just Google and get online?
There is.
Because I know there's a form you could just fill out online.
There is, yeah. So there's a Google form, but that's the sponsorships are under. We have a Facebook page called The Pride. It's our collective group at Canyon City High School. We know we're the Tigers. We looked up what's a group of Tigers. That wasn't very good, and we just went with that. So if they Google The Pride, and there'll be a post there pinned to our top, and there's a link to that Google form there, they can get information that way. Or they can simply call the high school. They can email the high school. They can email me at the high school. I want to find out about this IT page and the page you guys have and how potentially we could even put a link onto your guys' page as well if people are interested.
Awesome. And maybe a reminder, too, there's two different things you can do. You can just donate money, and the high school will do the shopping for you.
Absolutely, yeah.
The second is you can actually choose the students and be matched up with them and have kind of a connection with them. And I would just like to say that when my son was graduating during COVID, it was so amazing just to have somebody that would come and just specialize something for this kiddo who's, you know, it was a really tough time to go through. And she even came to our home and just sat down and had conversations with him. And it was just really, really beautiful and touching. As a mama bear, it was just so incredible. And I also had an opportunity to personally match with a high school student. And we still are connected to this very day.
I didn't know that.
And she's married now and has a little baby. And I just love when we get to see each other in the community and we're like, we're each other's people. And I just really, really love that.
It was really neat when we went over and said, "Hey, guess what? The mayor's your sponsor." And her eyes got all big, and it was like, oh, my gosh, really? Yeah, yeah. And that random draw, how it happens there. And so, it's really neat for, like, Brandon has signed up, and his business has donated as well, too. He's like, "Hey, you're sponsors." Oh, yeah, down the barber shop downtown. And so, we really try and make it a community effort.
I actually have a funny story. One of my kids, I don't remember which year, but he was super jealous. His mom was a sponsor as well, and she was buying the senior that she had these really fancy things. And he was super jealous that they weren't for him. They were for this other random kid.
Yeah, our community is so kind in what they do and they sponsor. And kind of like you said, one of the options is you can actually get this senior survey. And that's some of the fun for the people who are involved as the sponsor side. They get to go out and shopping. And I sign up every year, and it's like, okay, what can I get? Oh, yeah, my kid last year liked Marvel, so I was like, oh, okay, I can handle this. So it is fun to be able to go and shop, or people can just donate. And then our student leaders at the high school shop as well, too.
Awesome. Well, thank you for leading this community effort, and it's just really exciting and fun. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Our kids need as much love as they can possibly get.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council members, do you have any announcements? We'll move to Emily Tracy.
Thanks. I provided city council members and the mayor and city administrator, attorney, and city clerk a copy of a first draft of a letter that might ultimately, we don't know for sure yet, so I don't want to speak for the county, but it might ultimately be sent by the Board of County Commissioners to the regulators involved with the Cotter Superfund Site. I think I've mentioned before that we had kind of a, well, maybe we haven't had a council meeting since then, I can't remember. But on February 21, the community members of the Community Advisory Group for the Superfund Site learned that the company that acquired the site five years ago had declared insolvency. And this was a company that had been paid by Cotter Corporation, the previous owner, some amount of money. We don't know that amount. It was not publicly available, but we believe it was tens of millions of dollars. Was paid by Cotter Corporation to take over the site and to take over the responsibility for the environmental assessment that still needed to be done, and ultimately, someday, a cleanup of the Superfund Site. So it was quite a shock to the community to learn on February 21 that that company that had ownership for five years and had produced several documents under the federal Superfund law that they were required to produce. But we hadn't gotten to the point yet where there were new environmental assessment done, new testing. We're getting close to that point. So there's a lot of concern among folks who've been involved with this for quite some time. Kevin Grantham, Commissioner Grantham, is a member of the Community Advisory Group. He's the county's representative on that group. And he attended our community meeting last week and said that the county would be interested in communicating with the regulators. And so, that's why that letter that I shared with fellow council members here, that's why that letter was drafted. First, I want to say I would encourage, and I don't know if it would take just a poll of council members or what it would take, but I would encourage the city to write a letter also to the regulators. You can see from the draft that we put together for the county that there are a number of concerns. And the biggest concern is we've already been a Superfund Site here for decades, since the early 1980s. There's been a lot of things happen. But we were beginning, within the last five years, we were hopeful that we were on track to finally see a proper assessment done and ultimately a proper cleanup. But this has brought this to a pause or at least a slowing. There's not been very much communication from the regulators yet. I think city council members and mayor, I believe, have received maybe two communications. If you've received more, let me know. Fairly brief communications from the State Department of Public Health and Environment and from the federal EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, saying, you know, we're working on this. We've done a site visit. The Health Department did a site visit to determine how to do at least minimal maintenance at that site. There are some, at least one active system, some you'd say would be partly active, but at least one active system at the site that needs to be maintained, needs to be monitored, and so forth. Plus, there's security at the site that has to be continued. The company that owns the site had first said that they didn't have money to go past the end of February. They have now assured the regulators that they will maintain these operations until the end of March. What we don't know yet is what happens after the end of March. We know that in some ways, the process will continue. We don't know yet if that means that the EPA will need to come in and take over and do the document writing that needs to be done, the additional environmental assessment, testing, and so forth that needs to be done. So I think it's important that the community and that local government stay closely tuned to this so that we don't just find ourselves down the list in terms of having this site taken care of. It's been a very long time that this has been waiting for a proper resolution. So I would just ask that the city consider sending some kind of communication to the regulators, state and federal. And part of the reason I suggest that is that the city itself owns some property in what's called Operable Unit 1, which is closest to the site, potentially the most contaminated part of all of the site and the surrounding neighborhoods. So I'll leave it at that unless there's questions anyone has.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, what I'd like to do is share a little bit with council about my history. Starting in 1985, I have worked at uranium mills throughout the country. Of the four uranium mills that are on the CIRCLAHazardous Site List, I have been responsible for compliance at two, exactly half. I have completed a hazardous materials management course that covers extensively RECRA, which is hazardous waste, and CIRCLAH issues. I have completed, I have a handbook that I have referred to quite often about hazardous waste materials. Starting in 1985, something that was on, pretty much something that I reviewed every year, were nuclear regulations concerning uranium mills, both at the state level and the federal level. This is a federal-level handbook here. I also completed a management of hazardous materials course in 1994. And I just wanted to share some of the topics covered in that course. Overview of hazardous waste and CIRCLAH, introduction to hazardous waste, land disposal restrictions affecting mineral processing wastes, state waste programs, overview of CIRCLAH, the legal outline of CIRCLAH liability, CIRCLAH processes. This was a short course conducted essentially for attorneys, but it was a pretty comprehensive course. And I would have a couple of comments on the proposed letter. The, one of the bullets says, "We ask that CIRCLAH processes on the site be carried forward." Believe me, the EPA is quite jealous of their authority and will absolutely ensure that CIRCLAH processes continue no matter what entity is responsible for those processes. They have quite extensive legal and regulatory cures for non-compliances with the process. So there's a CIRCLAH legal process in place. It is being carried out. We heard on the 21st meeting from the EPA attorneys and CDPE attorneys, there was a request that health assessments be conducted. And that is part of the, you know, health assessments are absolutely part of the CIRCLAH process. Health assessments have been done in the past. And essentially, those assessments have not found a extreme environmental hazard or hazard to people's health attributable to the site. Otherwise, the agencies would have acted on that and required immediate action. They, this also recommends that CDPE ensures that there's a mechanism to enforce existing radioactive materials licenses. And I would ask, what mechanism is lacking? I do not believe there are lacking mechanisms. I believe CDPE has plenty of authority to make sure that license conditions are carried out. And it also asks for a thorough investigation of the use of funds paid by Cotter Corporation to Legacy Lands. That's actually a private contract. If I was a signer of that contract with Legacy Lands and I had, you know, lots of resources at my disposal, I, of course, would be pursuing whatever legal remedies were there in place to ensure just what the letter asked for, that there was no malfeasance on the part of the new owner. But, so, and the other thing, the other comment that I would make is that at some point, and I'll just say people, at some point, people are going to have to decide whether they want to see the best cleanup that ever was, or they want a cleanup that can be speedy, that meets standards, and is protective of the human health and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. We appreciate both of your expertise. Any other announcements from city council?
Just one. We do have a general government meeting this Wednesday at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. And we're going to be talking about the balance scorecard, which I'm sure we're all on tenterhooks waiting to hear about.
Can we have some documents sent to us before that Wednesday meeting for reference? Thank you. Okay, well, with that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve, actually, we can't do that. Thank you very much. We have a very, very important guest in our city council chambers today, and that is Abi. Let's let Chief Schick introduce them.
Madam Mayor, members of council, let me introduce Officer Greg Nish. Come on up, Greg.
Yes.
I'm not going to recognize you over there. Officer Nish recently reached his five-year mark of service with Canyon City Police Department. And tonight, Greg is just a top-shelf employee, person, an officer, who enhances our overall operations. I couldn't be prouder to be standing here with him tonight. Service excellence is indeed his mantra in his daily pursuits. Tonight, as we recognize him, we'll present him with his five-year pin and his recognition certificate. His personalized badge is not here yet. It is on back order. I suspect the way things are going right now, we'll probably see it hopefully by Christmas. But it's coming. It's in the mail. So please join me in recognizing Officer Nish for five years of honorable service to Canyon City, and I look forward to many, many more with Officer Nish. He is undoubtedly a valued member of our community and our police department.
Congratulations, Officer Nish. Awesome.
I do have a request. Officer Nish, could you please introduce your guests?
Yes, we love having the young ones come see. Come on up, guys. We're going to have to get a picture if that's okay.
I've got Deputy Nish over here. She's been my wonderful wife for nine years now. And then I've got my son in green over here, Braxton Nish, and then my middle kid, Carter Nish.
Welcome to city council. Thank you for your support. Yes, come on up. Okay, Ryan, it's your turn. Consent agenda, please.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on February 20, the Vision Committee meeting February 22, and the special city council meetings February 13, which was the Energy Committee, February 17, which was the Rural Gorge Chamber Alliance Banquet, and February 21, which was the DOC Community Relations Meeting. 8B authorizes the mayor to appoint Lauren Flick to the Historic Preservation Commission. 8C ratifies the city administrator's signature on the Hydraulic Ditch Crossing Agreement with the Canyon City Hydraulic and Irrigation Ditch Company. 8D authorizes the city administrator to sign an agreement to the, intergovernmental agreement with Sanitary Sewer Relocation on with sanitary sewer relocation on Rhodes Avenue. 8E awards bid 3123 Water Main purchased to Corn Main in an amount not to exceed $88,089. 8F awards bid 3523 Microsoft to Insight Public Sector under the state NASPO agreement in an amount not to exceed $233,357.10. 8G awards Nighthawk purchase to Nighthawk.CLOUD Inc., a sole-source vendor in an amount not to exceed $7,798. 8H authorizes the purchase of additional pack-set radios. There was a updated memo that was sent out to council on that one. 8I authorizes the purchase of police department SWAT equipment. And 8J, receive and file list of bills, cash dispersments.
Excellent, thank you. I'm going down in order, I was wondering if our Public Works Director, Lou Evans, if, do you want to come and address us about some of the items that are from your department?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. All right, keep my agenda here. Item C is for a crossing agreement of the hydraulic ditch. We had two capital projects that were replacing Water Main, one along College Avenue and one along Reynolds Avenue, that had to cross the hydraulic ditch, as the ditch has been here since 1860-something, much longer than me, I know that. We had to get permission from them to cross their property rights with those, so it did take a little bit of work. We modified an agreement that existed between the sanitation district and the hydraulic ditch to kind of come to our own terms on those, and those have been kind of approved by our attorneys, approved by their attorneys, signed in counterpart by both, to keep the projects moving quickly and expeditiously as they could, and now we're looking for ratification of those signatures. The other item that I prepared personally was the intergovernmental agreement for Rhodes Avenue. That project is on hold right now while we await a railroad crossing permit. We've got it to a point where we can get it open for the summer, kind of minimize the impact. However, there's work that the Fremont Sanitation District needs to complete yet next year. They asked to be released of the duties to come back and do that work next year, as their director is retiring in the next, I think, month or two, and, you know, a lot of their knowledge base is going out the door. They asked us if we would take over the contract that they have with Avalanche Excavating, who is also our prime contractor for the Rhodes Avenue work. They are paying us the remainder of their contract with Avalanche Excavating. In addition, I think they're paying 10% in case there's any cost increases, or overruns, or delays, or minor things that pop up. We don't have to go back to them for that. The other two, or the other, one was actually prepared by Travis, but that is a purchase of Water Main that goes along with the College Avenue and the Reynolds Avenue project to cover the purchase of Water Main that our crews will be installing themselves in conjunction with those projects. So, those are the three.
I, I do have a question on the agreement with the hydraulic ditch, and that's item number four about the license fee that the grantee is paying to the city. I wanted a little bit more explanation about what that is for and why.
Let me get that open here. That is essentially a, a permit fee that we have to pay for the rights to cross their property.
Oh, okay.
So it grants us the right to cross their property, it grants us the right to do maintenance work, to do future replacements of that Water Main, should there need to be. It should be a one-time fee per each of those Water Maines, provided that we don't have to add a second one in there, anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
The, I just wanted to pass along a rumor I heard that the railroad sent that right-of-way permit over to CDOT for final approval, but so, whatever that's worth.
I hope that's true. I like that rumor.
Do you have a good rumor base?
No. That's, that's, that's an attempt at humor.
I don't know, it's worse. Yeah. Any other questions for Leo, while he's up here? All right, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite next Elijah to come talk about the Microsoft, if you'd like to give us some insight.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So my item on the consent agenda is the Microsoft licensing. Essentially, what that is, is we are migrating all of our current licensing that the city owns from a Select Plus agreement through Microsoft, we currently hold to a new enterprise agreement. That is under state bid and under a state contract, so the state of Colorado actually has a master agreement with Microsoft directly. We would be signing as an affiliate underneath the state of Colorado, so we get the benefit of group discount pricing through the state, as well as some of the minimum licensing requirements that are normally enforced. We get the benefit of group licensing levels through all of the local governments in the state. Essentially, what we are doing is we have on-premise licensing for our Microsoft Office suites, so Excel, Word, Outlook, the traditional softwares. We also have on-premise licensing through a third-party email provider, I'm sure you're all familiar with, since you use it. We've been having quite a bit of issues with that email platform, just compatibility with some of the other softwares we're running in the city, some security flaws and issues, and just kind of a plethora of bugs and issues that we've ran into through the few years we've been running it. So we're going to hope to discontinue use of that software and move to a Microsoft 365 platform. There is a difference in Microsoft licensing between Office 365 and Microsoft 365. We kicked the idea around of just doing Office 365 for a while, but the benefit to moving to a full Microsoft 365 license is it includes the Windows operating system licenses for the machines that we run throughout the city, as well as the licenses that Microsoft requires all personnel accessing computer systems to have, which is a client access license. It loops all of that into one simple-to-manage license per person. So, not only are we migrating what we currently have, but through purchasing the Microsoft 365 licensing, we will add some increased functionality. We'll be able to utilize SharePoint as a service for staff internet, employee internet. We've had quite a few requests over the years for an FTP site, or an ability to transfer large files in and out of the city, so the licensing through this agreement would allow us to do that. Individual OneBox, Teams, so there's a potential in the future for our unified communication systems that we currently use to migrate over to Teams and just kind of consolidate all of our licensing. That's pretty much the end of it, so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Elijah? All right, excellent, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And then Chief, you have a couple of items on the agenda as well.
Hello again, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yes, we have a Nighthawk investigative tool analysis software that we're seeking to approve tonight, as well as additional Motorola radios for our new co-responder unit, and we are also seeking approval for SWAT equipment for our, our SWAT team. You want me to address those in that order, or?
Well, we have a question already.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not really a question, but, but just, just kind of a, an observation perhaps, and a comment, but on the Nighthawk purchase for the, for that, for those materials, I did read that, and, and my, my comment on that is, wow.
Oh.
You know, it is, it is truly amazing.
Yes, sir.
That's my observation, I guess. My comment is, you know, I'm a strong supporter of the police department, and
Yes, sir.
you know, making sure that our, that we, that we perform one of our primary responsibilities, which is keeping our citizens safe. But, but nonetheless, when we have such advanced technology like this, I do have concerns that are just general ones, not anything specific, about, you know, the, the ability to data gather, and kind of the tension that creates sometimes with our United States Constitution.
Sure.
And that's, that's just, that's just a, a comment, doesn't require any response, but, but I do support your, your request.
And we, we absolutely appreciate your support and rest of council's support, and those are legitimate concerns, right? I can tell you that most of the data that Nighthawk seeks and, and collates for the investigator saves us hundreds of man-hours. All, most of all of it is open source information streamed through our social media sites and things of that such, and anything beyond that, when we start talking about GPS tracking or call detail records, or phone usage and that type of thing, we, of course, have to seek a court order or a search warrant for, from a judge. So, those are all in line with our Fourth Amendment standards. I mean, you are right, it is a powerful tool, and it's going to, it streamlines a lot of things. I was talking with Mr. Stevens before, you know, it, it breaks down those, those boundaries between departments. Everybody registered with Nighthawk, you know, is able to share that data, and it automatically collates and link analysis, and, and it shares that data across police departments. So, for instance, if, if Pueblo was working a target that we were working, and Nighthawk would recognize that and put the two of us together and share the relevant data, so that we, we had the most actionable intelligence at our, at our disposal.
Councilmember Schmisher on line.
Hello.
Thank you so, hello, Chief Schick, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I also had a question about Nighthawk, similar, similar to Mayor Protem Hamrick's. I'm wondering if you're planning to institute additional policies and procedures around the usage of Nighthawk and around the training of officers for how it will be used. Thanks.
Sure. We don't have a specific policy in mind. There is industry best practices, and we'll certainly be training with Nighthawk to those practices, and, and of course, all the legal parameters, such as the Fourth Amendment concerns, but, no, those, those are pretty much outlined in our policy right now. I don't know of any specific policies that we need to be looking at, specific to Nighthawk. It's just another investigative tool, and we are, our parameters are, you know, the case law and the Constitution, so I, I think we're pretty well-covered there.
I'm Cory.
Okay, so the, the policies that you already have in place regarding data storage, usage, transfer, et cetera, would apply to anything that was gathered through this new tool as well?
Yes, ma'am. That, that would be, that would be my impression, yeah.
Cory, did you have anything you wanted to add or validate?
No, I, I agree 100% with the chief.
Okay. I guess my question about maybe the intensity of this database and the software is that, under previous chief, we got some really new technology, we were really excited about it, and then it, like, never got implemented because it wasn't compatible, compatible with our software, and I, I don't know, I'm sure there's a lot of other stories about it, but I guess my question is, are we going to be able to implement this? And Elijah, maybe you can be a part of this conversation to implement it and use it? Is this going to, tool that we're going to invest in and actually use?
Well, there are a number of agencies throughout Colorado that use it, to include CBI, and as we expand our, our digital investigative capabilities, right now, we have detective that is, is being trained with ICAC, Internet Crimes Against Children, to do forensic analysis on, on computer devices, and in fact, we worked a case last week with them, with a potential offender here in our, our community. So as we expand our, our digital investigative capabilities, I think Nighthawk will, will flow right into that nicely. Certainly, if it is something that, and, and Mr. Stevens asked a question about, you know, just the efficacy of the program, and, and whether or not we'll be able to track, you know, sort of quality control, if we're using it to the capacity that we should be, we'll, we'll certainly pull that data at the end of the year before we come to council again and seek, you know, additional monies to move forward. But I, I think we have the capacity to be successful with this, this device or this software, and I think we certainly have the capacity to measure our success in the end of the year.
Excellent, that's good to know. Cory?
I guess one, one thing I'll add, as I'm listening to this conversation, there actually is case law that suggests that especially digital information that's received, say, from Facebook, no Fourth Amendment protection.
No.
You are, you are asking for people to be your friend, just like, I mean, frankly, a police department can use a, a pseudonym and friend someone, that's not a Fourth Amendment violation.
No.
So when the, the chief is talking about all these, all the digital information that's out there, it's a matter of finding it and mining it.
Yes.
But it is not a Fourth Amendment violation. So there's actually good case law that's evolved that way with, with social media and other forms of digital media.
Yeah.
Now, kind of brings you back to our, our consultants that help us mine information for businesses to attract to Canyon City. That almost seems more of a violation than just mining social media posts and other things, and at least this is using it to catch the bad guys.
And, and this is something that we've been doing for years now, but the software just enhances those capabilities, where we'd have three or four detectives assigned to a case researching social media sites, specific to a target, to a target's acquaintances or friends, and, and just countless man-hours, where Nighthawk comes in, it just very precisely identifies all of that, across all social media. So it's not just specific to Facebook or Instagram, every, every platform out there, and it goes out, as Mr. Hoffman indicated, mining for specific data related to your targets, and, and automatically collates it and puts it into a, a very usable fashion.
That's where we're going.
Yes, ma'am.
It's all about data.
Just, another, another comment. The, you know, there are those that have the biblical perspective, that the mark of the beast is 666. The, I am not so sure that the true translation of that is not WWW.
Hmm. As far as having everything about your private life shouted from the rooftops, referenced in the Bible, I mean, we just, we do that to our, we do that ourselves, and yeah, it's really amazing, but it's a, sounds like an interesting tool. I'd be really curious to see how, the efficacy of the tool, and hope that is used well.
We can certainly prepare that for you next year. Yes, ma'am.
Definitely don't want us to sit, sitting on the shelf.
Assuming that council approves.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for Chief? Any other questions for Ryan? Okay, well, Brandon Smith.
Madam Mayor, in council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call of vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, council. Thank you, staff. I really appreciate having our department heads here, especially when there's things on the agenda, that we have your expertise to be able to answer our questions and help us to make the best decisions that we can, and appreciate your work to prepare this information for us. Ryan, let's do an administrators' report if we can.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. You have my written reports, have a couple of items on here that are not on the report. As of this morning, we have nearly 1,100 responses to our Clock Tower Plaza survey. You know, when public engagement like this is done, even in, in Denver, they, you know, they're lucky to get a thousand responses. We're, we're close to 1,100. So, that survey closes on March 12th, so there's still six days roughly to respond if the community's interested in having their voice heard on what they'd like to see there. And then the other item is, we've been notified of a bid error on our police radios. We're working with the vendor, they're working with us to correct the issue, so just a heads-up there. That, that is why you received a second memo, because there, there was some incorrect information in that, in that memo, and that does affect the larger purchase that we made, so, but it does sound like the vendor's going to be correcting that issue. Happy to take any questions regarding the administrators' report.
Ryan, for the benefit of the public, can you expand a little bit more about the Clock Tower survey, and where they can find it?
Absolutely. We are working on, we've hired a consulting company to help us redefine what the Clock Tower Plaza is at Third and Main Streets, and right now, we're taking, we've got a survey out there, taking input on what people would like to see out there. You can find the You can find the survey both on our Facebook page or also on the city's website, canyonsity.org, and I believe we've, we've got some, some quick links there on the main page to, to get you to the survey.
What's, what's the most flavorful or interesting idea we've received so far?
You know, I have not seen all the results. We, we had a meeting last week with some of the stakeholders, and the consulting company had some of the early results, but they didn't provide any of the writing answers. It was mostly just the, the tabulated, pre-tabulated responses.
Right, and, and I would like to say in that meeting with the consultants, that it was in particular to invite the businesses that abut the Clock Tower Plaza, and I just really appreciate that they have been brought in from the very beginning so that they can voice their concerns and put in their input, because they're gonna be directly affected by whatever happens there. And, and they brought up some important things that we really needed to keep in mind. The consultants also really wanted to see more youth, so some of those results was just the demographics, you know, the different age groups, and they actually really wanted to have more of our teenagers respond to this, that they needed to have an investment, because this is an amenity for them as well, and just thought it was really awesome that our schools were on board and helping our kiddos participate in civic engagement, and they were encouraged to participate in the survey as well. And I love seeing with 1,100 responses and probably a lot more coming, that it shows some really incredible excitement from the public and support for what will be happening. It's really interesting, when I posted this on the Facebook page, a particular person commented that, oh, you're just doing this for show, you just say you're gonna get public and public, at the end of the day, you're just gonna do whatever you want. That is so further from the truth. We really, really want to make a product that the public wants, that they desire, and that they can support and get behind. And as I had mentioned this on the Carolyn radio this last Wednesday, actually, and it's to our benefit as a city council too, because if we put out a product, a product that the citizens do not appreciate or want, it is so much more torture for us as a city council to have chambers full of angry people, emails of angry people, can't go anywhere on the streets without somebody yelling at you about, you know, the clock tower, whatever. And so this is to our benefit to create a product that this community can truly embrace, and it seems like that's, that's gonna be happening with so many people responding. So I'm really, really appreciative of what this, the consultants have been doing so far. I love it. Looks like Amy Schmisher has her hand up, and then Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Administrator Stevens, could you please also expound a little bit on the bid error issue? Thank you.
The bid error, yeah, the, it appears that we received the wrong bid information for the chargers of the radios, so they, they sent the wrong chargers for the radios. So they are expeditiously working on fixing that particular issue.
And I would just add, the error was not on the city side.
Is that gonna affect costs?
Thanks.
That is what they're, we're hoping to hear from them very soon on that, but it should not.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and just, just a comment on the planning and zoning section. The, there were, it's, it's not appropriate for every project that we're talking about there, but, and it's, and I know in certain cases it's to be determined, but it would be awfully nice to have this, an estimated date for a certificate of occupancy on some of these projects, even if it's a to-be-determined notation or comment on that, because, because as we get closer to these, that, that's information I would like to have. I realize there's, there's nothing, you know, everything is to be determined right now for all these projects, because there's a lot of process that has to go on, but, but it would be nice to have that as a reminder that as we get closer, that, to perhaps give us some information on that, in that area.
I, I will try and think about how we can do that, because certificates of occupancy don't get administered at the planning and zoning stage, they get administered at the building department stage. So a, as these projects fall off of the planning and zoning, you're actually not gonna see them once they enter that building, building department phase.
There's so many variables that are out of your control or out of your communication level of what's happening with their contractors, too. Yeah, but that is, yeah, an interesting idea. Okay.
I, I can't give an update, I do, the gas station, the city market fueling station at 15th and RGB East Main or Main Street, Fremont Drive, that contractor was in the office last week, so that project is getting closer for demolition.
Now that that ugly paint came off that building, it actually doesn't look too bad.
I know, I'm like, hmm.
Oh, that's a whole other conversation.
Oh, but we are gonna move on to item 10A, second reading and adoption for ordinance one, series of 2023. This is concerning district maps and adopting a revised district map based on new census data.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a second reading. The maps were presented at the last city council meeting, we have not received any additional public comments, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Any questions or discussion from the council? If not, I'd love to entertain a motion, Mayor, or Councilmember Smith.
Did I get in first?
Yeah, you did. It was, they were coming in really fast.
Well, my button didn't light up, so I didn't know.
See, you're closer.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance one, series of 2023 on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Tracy, was your button for a motion? Okay. Then I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Fantastic, thank you, council, and thank you, staff, and it's nice to see Canyon City growing a little bit. 10B is second reading and adoption for ordinance two, series of 2023, and this is concerning the historic designation for 412 North 15th Street.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is a second reading. Our museum director and historic preservation liaison, Lisa Stutes, did a very thorough presentation at the last city council meeting. This is to designate the structure at 412 North 15th Street as a historic structure. That's a local designation, and we have not received any additional public comments, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Thank you. It was fun to see the article in the Daily Record about this historic structure and just, yeah, beautiful pictures, beautiful stories, and just a lot of public engagement and excitement over that historic building, and it's a, definitely a gem for a community. Councilmember Tracy, since I didn't get you last time, do you wanna take this one?
Sure, I'll do that. I move for approval of ordinance number two, series of 2023 on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call of vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. 10C is second reading again for ordinance three, series of 2023. This is amending titles five, eight, and nine of the municipal code concerning licenses and regulations for specific businesses within the city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is a second reading. This is regarding business licenses that were already in the city code. This ordinance is reorganizing that section, as well as moving many regulations or updating to regulations to match state code. Again, we have not received any additional public comments, and staff would recommend approving on second reading.
Is there any, any discussion from the council?
Yes.
Sure, Mayor Protem Hamrick.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you to, to staff. This version of the, of, of the proposed ordinance and changes was much easier to follow and much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance three, series of 2023 on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call of vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and thank you, staff, so much. Next.
Before, before we do that, I did have one question for, for our city clerk. Perhaps you could tell us, have you, you know, how many letters of application you've received for the Water Committee? I should have brought this up under the appropriate, but I'd like to.
I currently have five.
Five?
As of this evening, yes.
Thank you.
Are there a variety of applicants to fill in our different slots that we have designated for different groups?
I think we have a, a group of people with many different skill sets, so they could probably be.
They could do all kinds of things.
Probably be slotted into different areas, yes.
Excellent. You're just collecting them for now. Good. Mayor Protem Hamrick?
And so, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And council, I move that the city council enter into executive session for the following purpose. An executive session to hold a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4B regarding options for the potential acquisition of private property for a public purpose.
Do we need to do both of them? Do we need to vote separately, or can we vote together?
You can do it as one motion.
Okay. And so the B?
Thank you. I did not print out my amended agenda, and I also move that, that we enter into executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing a strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding potential disposition of city property pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4E.
Second.
There's been a motion? There has been a motion and a second, the discussion? Call of vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.